Open the meeting?
We don't have a chair.
I just tried to open the meeting. So the meeting is now open. According to this, we will look at the records of previous meetings.
Unfortunately, no, I did them today and we just didn't have time.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to postpone that till next week's meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
If we get any audience participation. Okay. Is Wendy here? Is she gonna be here?
Here.
I don't know if you remember or not, but I-
Oh, yes. I do. And your family. You had other members of your family who were, I believe, working for the town, weren't, didn't you? I have a question, quick question before we turn to me. You just said, um, holding on your minutes till next week, but are you meeting next week?
No.
Okay.
That's something we can roll on tonight.
Yeah.
No, it's a holiday.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's Veterans Day. We can't meet next week.
We'll approve it on the 18th.
It's a good thing I got somebody to remind me because I have to look at my driver's license in the morning to get up. Okay, so it will be the two weeks from tonight. So what, what can we do for you?
So, um, time in your packet, there's a, a draft contract between the town and Wendy Foxman. My council drafted it for us and also recommended, um, instead of contracting with her as a consultant, that we bring her on as a part-time employee, no more than nineteen hours a week. Um, you'll see the, uh, the rate, um, which Wendy, um, was requesting, which is at currently seventy dollars an hour. It'll be temporary. Actually, if you look at the, um, but the, is it the term, Wendy? What did we say?
Can you just help me? Uh, no one can see me, right? You're just, you just can hear me?
No, we can see you. We see you.
Where, am I like on the wall?
Yeah, you're, you're on a mobile screen.
Oh, finally. Actually, I made a small film about, I was in a little film about small towns when I worked for, uh, the Hill Towns in eighty-four. So, okay, there we go. Uh, so I'm sorry, Josh, where was it the term you were referencing?
Well, so, um, the term would be, what did we say, Wendy? It'll be up to November ninth.
Yes.
For me, you know, I got elected. Well, you'll know that it won't be coming back. So at that point, you can revisit and extend. Cause Wendy, which is also gonna do is help with the search.
So if you're not coming back? So just for fun.
This is all for fun. I'm already having a nervous breakdown, TJ. Don't, don't make me nervous. Um, but anyways, so yeah, it's what, the, the, the whole concept here is that Wendy will step in on the interim and gap fill. Um, I know at the last meeting, we talked about taking leave of absence. She'll step in, uh, offer up to nineteen hours a week, keep things going, also help with the, uh, the search process if the election turns out to be, you know, that I get elected.
When, when is her start date? Would, what, when would her start date be? I'll figure it out.
Next week, Tuesday.
It's coming Tuesday.
Yeah, cause you guys want it the overlap.
Yeah, alright.
Next week, Tuesday, cause Monday's a holiday. And so we already put it in our schedule to meet Tuesday and Friday. Um, so that we can, uh, transition over and equip her with everything she needs to hit the ground running.
If no one else has anything against it, I would make a motion that we accept this employment agreement between us and Wendy Foxman to serve until November ninth. Unless, you know, unless Josh gets stopped all over, but that's my motive.
Well, we said it, we said it in there to give him some breathing room, uh, on that as well.
Yeah, I second it.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. It's so voted.
So, um, great. Congratulations, Wendy.
Thank you. I cannot tell from what I see which member of the board is speaking, um, but I know it's two guys, one of whom I've met before, so. Um, and Carol, you're waiting for Carol Attender to, to show up, I guess.
The one, the one speaking is the one you used to know as Fire Guy.
I got the zoom cameras far.
Right or left? It's that far away. Right or, uh, who's near the flag?
Okay, I saw actually, this is TJ Kuzinow.
Oh, TJ, and we're connected too through other Kuzinos, so, um, and it's, it'll, I look forward to meeting you, Joanne. I've heard just the best from, from Josh about you, so. You can see me, but I, I can only see now, I can see the back of your head, so. I have to say, I'm extremely impressed with where Blanford is at now, having first met Blanford in nineteen eighty-four and kind of touched base with you again when I was at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission before Josh, we were following each other around one way or another, so, um, uh, anyway, I'm so impressed. I don't think any other town I know gets their, um, Zoom meetings up as quickly as you do. And so to, to that end, I appreciate that because I did watch your last meeting after the meeting, and I have been looking at minutes and, you know, informing myself, off the clock, off the clock. So I can, you know, really hit the ground running and mostly to assure you, the board, Josh and Joanne, that don't worry, we'll, 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 we'll make this work. So things proceed smoothly.
Thank you.
It's good to hear.
It's, it's funny, cause, uh, when I started at the PVPC, I was taking over her role. And now here we are, full, uh, three sixty here, but she's taken over mine, so it's, it's crazy how small the world is.
So I'm happy to answer any questions and I will stay here for the meeting, so I know, so I, I will follow what's going on in town.
I would like to know what, what kind of writing did she do?
Kind of what?
Writing, you said she did some kind of writing for-
Grant writing?
No. Move along, move along.
If you think of it, please let me know because I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I can do that next week.
Are you referring to the research writing?
Yeah, is that what-
Oh, circuit writer.
Circuit writing, what is circuit-
Oh, writing, okay, so back in nineteen, in the nineteen eighty-four, I was hired by the four towns of Blanford, Chester, Huntington, and Worthington to be the shared town administrator, and that was called the Circuit Rider Program. I was in Blanford for one year, the other towns were eating up my time, and Blanford realized what they really needed was a Joanne initially. And then they could get onto a town administrator type position. I got completely absorbed with work in Huntington and Chester. We did a lot of development grants and we, we did the Commons and we, we took over Stanton Hall and we did that. And Chester, as you can, as you can imagine, had a lot of need as well, so. That's that. And I was there when, uh, John and Carolyn and, oh my goodness, I, I thought of his name last night and I forgot it again, Ted. The other Ted. What?
That's me.
No, no, the other, it was Ted who was no longer with us. I think he was in the insurance industry and they were the members of the board. And it was the only town where the board members, and I'm not saying anything about how you are right now, where the board members came dressed up in suits and ties and Carolyn Taylor would always bring in a, a plate of cookies. And, but all my other towns came right out of the barn, you know, just, we had flan, you know, whatever, flannel shirts, worked, workday, whatever people were wearing. But it was very formal in, in Blanford back then, so. But I'm happy to say that part of the project that I was working on that Josh carried on so well from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission had me back in touch with the towns when we started the, the, uh, it's called something else now, but it was the School of Municipal Finance Advisory Committee. And Josh continued with that after I left the planning commission. So I, I re-met many people that I knew, whether they were still serving or I, you know, showed up or something, so. Anyway, I've taken up enough time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Carol will be here, she'll ask.
Is she gonna be here?
Yes, she's just said she'd be a little bit late, she-
Um, do you wanna do your, uh, Southern Hilltown Geo Cluster meeting until Carol gets here, or?
Yeah.
Well, I don't wanna just walk away from-
I want, yeah, I'm here.
Oh, we have one.
I know Peter Langmore and we've crossed paths many times since, since then, so I'm looking forward to, I assume that's who's on the agenda, Peter Langmore, so.
I thought Peter was gonna be here, but, and I don't know about Kim.
Okay.
But, I mean, I can-
I think he's, Joanne's probably texting him right now. So that way you guys are here as a team.
What, uh, what unfinished business have we got?
Uh, we got a lot of unfinished business, but work in progress. I did include in your package, though, um, a quote that John Hoppy-
That's the one I just showed you.
Got us. Um, so the boiler, um, was, is leaking, and so he had someone was finally able to get somebody to come up and take a look at it. Turned out that one of the gaskets-
Say again, please? Yeah, I saw.
One of the-
I'm multitasking.
And one of the eight, is it eight gaskets? Uh, one of the gaskets was leaking.
Yeah.
So they gave us two quotes. The first one you'll see, the three nine eighty, to, uh, uh, to repair that one leaky gasket, but we were on the phone just earlier with John.
Yeah. Yes, uh, the fuel line is rusted through from, after it comes through the wall. Yeah. And, uh, that needs to be replaced. And then we got one gasket that's leaking, but there's, they're all the same age.
I don't see, if you're, if you're gonna do some work on that boiler, let's do it all.
That's the way I feel.
So I was thinking, I mean, we can do that. If you want me to, uh, present in the finance committee on Thursday and just say, hey, select boards recommending this for you.
Yeah, that's right. I think that'd be, uh, here, Josh, Mary?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but TJ, I thought under the Green Communities Act, we're looking to do a new burner, boiler furnace?
We were looking at, uh, that was all a computerized system. We weren't looking at the boiler and burners. We're looking because the system was originally designed to be on a computer and the computer ran the system.
It's what the management system we're currently on because of Green Communities, but it, it wasn't to replace the-
It wasn't to replace any boilers or anything like that.
Thank you.
So if we're going to do any work on this, this boiler, we should do the whole thing.
Get it done. Get it done.
Yeah, and at the same time, fix that fueling too.
Yeah, that's included in that.
Well, well, no, no, so the, the fuel line, we're, we're working on that quote.
Oh, that's a different book. I thought it was-
Alright, that's not something we can wait more than a week or so.
The second page there, the eight, nine, that's to, um, repair all the gaskets or replace all the gaskets.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, we have enough, uh, capital to take care of this, but certainly can present to the finance committee to see if they had any other alternate recommendation.
Aye, and at the same time, you're getting a quote to replace that, or repair, repair or replace that fuel.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Hoppy is.
That's not gonna be, to replace it, it's not gonna be an easy cause it's gotta, they gotta put a new line through the wall.
Well, Hoppy said that, aye, they weren't concerned with the fuel line outside. It's from inside to where it goes through the filter systems. That's gotta be redone.
Okay. Alright, let's see what they have to say with their proposal.
Yeah.
And in the interim, uh, I would make a motion to use Phase Eight Boiler to do, use their proposal number one thirteen. Disassemble all the piping, casing, and oil burner. Replace all fireside, waterside gaskets in between each section. Reassemble boiler components, pressurize and check for leaks to the sum of eighty-nine hundred dollars.
Second it.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favors, aye.
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 Carol's missing out on all of her stuff.
We're still waiting on one more, alright? He's not coming, so you guys are good?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, mister-
Okay, we'll go to the Southern Hilltown Geo Cluster.
Yeah. May I come up there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Wait a minute, something I, I just pushed the little fucker.
Would you like us?
I'm gonna, I have a computer. Share my screen.
Yeah. I'll jump on Zoom, I gotta make your host.
So, what I wanna do here, show you the, the area has been divided, the Wip City Fiber Counts have been, uh, divided into five, uh, what they call Geo Clusters, and, um, we are part of the Southern Hilltown Geo Cluster, which includes the town of Beckett, Washington, Otis, and Blanford. And as, as you can be able to see here, I, I just thought of the easier dots, ever have everything on here. And there are other things I'd like to update you on the status, if that's, if you allow me. So, I have to be on Zoom?
Yeah, cause I have to.
Oh, man, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You wanna send me a- Oh, Wendy, hey, thank you for-
Hi, Peter. Okay, carry on.
Thank you for putting that on the website.
That's Wendy, Wendy Foxman.
Wendy Foxman. Oh, my gosh.
Not Wendy Burn.
What do you, what do you, uh, what is your cap, capacity here?
She's gonna be coming in as interim.
Interim town administrator.
Okay.
You'll have to explain that okay to me. Okay, carry on, please.
Don't scare her away.
Mary, just give me a second, please, too. Why isn't this coming up? Uh, anyway, the towns are Beckett, Otis, Washington, and Blanford, four towns. And current, currently, the, uh, the, the purpose of this is for re, re, resiliency redundancy. I understand, it's just coming up. Yeah, this thing here. I wanna get on. It, it hasn't come up yet. I don't know. Um, you do, go ahead, yeah. I'm going to show you this. So currently, the MBI or the Middle Mile comes up from the Russell Elementary School. And, uh, on, um, uh, Dickinson Hill Road and then up twenty-three, and that's our only connection with the internet at this point. If that line went down.
Oh, okay.
If a tree fell on it and broke, then we would be without, without, uh, service, the whole town. Um, or, or anybody, you know, on twenty-three there. So they're designing networks, uh, for all of the towns, so that they would be, uh, would automatically jump to a secondary network. Which in our case would be part of, uh, the Otis, Beckett, Washington network. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that up and I, I have the cost involved. We're going to, um, um, we'll, we'll sign, uh, the agreement to, these are the upfront costs. They'll be going forward costs, which I don't have at this time.
What are the costs, Peter?
What?
What are the costs?
Just hang on one second. Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, that- So, I'm gonna make you, uh, join. Was that alright? I'm gonna make your host. Okay. Yes. You are. Okay. Very good. So what I wanted to show you first.
Those are all the documents, what do you want, sure?
No, they're not all here. Um, they're on, that's- Can I go here and do this? Right.
Thank you.
So that's, how do I do that? Oh. Okay. Can you see that? Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Alright, so, um, alright. What is that? That me?
That you.
Doing what? Okay. Uh, so you see here, uh, this is, this here, this is Blanford, and this, this is the, uh, Beckett, and Washington is up here and Otis. So, uh, the current network comes up, uh, from Russell. It's a green line right there. Joanne, I hope I don't get you in the eye with this. And it will connect to Beckett, I mean, excuse, Otis on Route twenty-three. Uh, there's an alternate route, North Blanford Road to go to Algeria. I'm not sure that that, uh, is the way they're gonna do it. So that's the, the map. It's this one. These, this is the proposal. I'm not gonna go through this whole thing, but basically they've broken it down. This is the equipment that we're going to need to purchase. Each town will have to purchase. And they've divided the costs up equally among the, uh, four towns, which I think is fair. Um, this is the total for the network equipment, twelve thousand, two hundred and eight dollars for Blanford, for every town, or three hundred and eight. Uh, Blanford has been identified as the, kind of this, uh, area, the center, it's not for whatever reason, that's, they chose us, which doesn't do us one thing, one way or the other, but that's fine. This just explains it, but, uh, here is the number of miles, uh, that that they would need to get to any particular, you know, Russell line, Otis line. But the, but really, I, what I wanted to, the reason I wanted to bring this up is to show you this. So that each investment for, for the, um, Phase Two is twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty, uh, eight dollars and sixty-six cents, which, um, actually verbally, we all, all of the towns, we had a, uh, a Zoom ma, a meeting, and everyone agreed, uh, all the MLPs agreed that that was fair. So now this document just needs to be signed. Um, Phase Three is, you can read this, I'm not gonna go through this. But it's, it's, uh, it's, it's going, I don't know the cost, they don't have a cost for it, but really, you know, is, there's really no alternative, otherwise we're dead, so. I just kinda wanna get your-
There, and there have been other places where they've had failures and they've had no backup, so therefore people were without service for an extended period of time. So this, this will keep, uh, all of these four towns without having an area where there's no service, except for maybe where the break is.
Now, the equipment that they're purchasing for, what was it, twelve grand plus? Now, is that go into the hot?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So there's no additional building or anything?
No, no, everything goes in there. There's room in there, it's plenty of room. Um, so kinda at this point, I just wanted to let you know and to kinda get your verbal approval. But the same, I will sign it. Uh, it's, it's MLP, needs to sign this. But I wanted to get your approval.
No. Uh, it's, this is the same kinda system that when we were looking at Wired West, that they were suggesting.
Uh, similar, very similar.
I guess, it was so long ago, I don't remember anything.
Well, come on, you're young.
It was, it is a similar plan.
Yeah.
With what Wired West was, so that we would have, uh, redundancy, so that nobody in, in the whole Wired West, you know, group, would have a problem if something did happen.
Well, we're just backing up huts.
Yeah, exactly.
We're backing up the huts.
Right.
We're backing up the towns.
Yes, well, well, the huts, yes, but the towns, basically.
Right, yeah.
So that, basically, so that no town should be without service for an extended period of time.
Right.
Thanks.
Did you wanna say something? So this is a, a scope and not a contract, I'm assuming? Just, it's a quote, yes, uh, more like a, a scope of what's involved, but not necessarily a contract.
Well, it is for the beginning.
Well, it is, yeah, but a contract will, there is a different, wait a minute, I think I have that, um-
Because there's, this is a going forward thing, so.
Yeah, they kinda want like-
Another contract.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, cause they wanna know, it's kinda like, is there a commitment, nevertheless, but is there a contract, yeah, yeah. So I, I would, so, whatever you guys decide, I just wanna let you know that, I mean, I, well, first of all, I should ask you, Peter, do you have a particular funding source that's gonna cover the twenty thousand dollar cost?
Okay, so let's talk about that.
Okay.
EDBT. I mean, uh, our, 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 I'm, what is it? The, the funds from the government?
ARBA.
ARBA, okay, so that's, so there wasn't, that is a particular funding source, so I was just gonna say that the, the portal is online.
Just put it in the, yeah, just put it right in, um, except that you're not gonna know tomorrow whether or not this is gonna be committed to until the select board can review all the, uh, but it's, it's a no, I see what you mean.
It's just like a no-brainer, but we'll take it out of our operating fund then, if, if that makes sense.
If, if not.
Does that make sense? I mean, right now, it has to be paid now. If it has to be paid now, not a year from now.
There's no so, there's my-
Five, huh?
It's, it's not gonna like reimburse you or anything.
Right.
Um, so if you have funding for it now, great.
Yeah, but, but I think it's appropriate to take out a ARBA.
Yeah, but it's all the time right now, Peter, you're asking for them to approve ARBA, like the process is currently, so we have to wait, so.
Depends when they need the money, right?
You, you don't have the ARBA fund yet.
No, we have, we have the ARBA funds, but the select board laid out a process to solicit projects. There's a deadline, which I think is in like two or three weeks.
Yeah, the twenty-second, I think.
So, you know, but you guys can do what you want, I was just letting you guys know.
After that two or three weeks. After that two or three weeks, is that money then available if if they?
It's available, it's available. They wanna support it right now, spend it. But there was a process the Select Board.
No, 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 I will put it in with the process. This doesn't have to be paid right away, no.
Oh, that's what I knew. It sounded like it was an urgency.
No, there's no urgency.
I was just letting you know, Peter, that yes, that is a funding source.
Okay.
Definitely put in so that the Select Board can get, get it along with the other requests.
All right.
And I believe that one of the reasons why Blanford was chosen to kinda be the hub is, is that we have another avenue. The others don't have quite as many avenues as we do as to how they're gonna do this. So we offer the best source of redundancy for everybody, which is, which is good, if if we do this.
I think that's great. It's very forward thinking.
So. Okay, Kara, you up to date now? We're just talking about this, this map of connecting all the internet of all the four towns, Blanford, Beckett, Otis, and Washington.
Cool.
Okay. So that was, do now have like, how can we do this?
Now, you mentioned Beckett. Now Beckett's going in with Westfield.
Yeah, all those towns are, all those towns are Whip City, Fiber Towns. Two of them are Wired West towns in addition, but that's irrelevant.
Yeah.
There's no verbal needed, just put in the application.
All right, I will do that. So.
It's really easy. It's, you know, description, costs, anticipated costs. You already have that stuff there.
Yeah, that's all from Westfield. It's all broken down. Okay, questions on that? If I may, this is the this is the billing for the town for the month of August. And in August, you'll see. Can you see this? We had a hundred and ten ISPs at thirty four dollars and sixty nine cents, which is what we pay Westfield. We, we charge our, the customers eighty five. So up there. Then in addition, they had a couple of Lifeline people and, and two, four, or five EBPP credits. That's fine. That was last month. Now we have this month. And we have a hundred and seventy average, this is the average, when the bill comes out for the month. And the price per went down to twenty nine forty seven because that's the function of the total number of customers.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. We are not, we're still charging eighty five. The rest of this is kinda self explanatory. Incidentally, static IP, I found, that's what the town, they're coming tomorrow to install it, but it's become a static IP. For some reason. Then Lifeline credit, two people at nine dollars and twenty five cents get credit for the Lifeline, which is what what are you doing?
He just let me in.
And then the EBPP is EBPP are for, they're for people here at fifty dollars. Okay, those are programs that one has to apply for through this form. Are there any questions on the billing? Because this is a monthly bill that we pay. So this month, it was ten thousand seven seventy six dollars. Okay? So the town pays for all of them. But we get reimbursed. It goes into never, never, yes. Yeah. The next thing, so the Lifeline EBPP. The town website. Okay, so I went to here. Town website is here. Town of Blanford. No. I'm sorry. Maybe it's here. There. So this is Wendy, and I apologize, wrong Wendy, right? Wendy put this up on the website a couple, three days ago. So people who when they get their bill before, they can apply for this through this process. Okay? The fifty dollars or the nine dollars and twenty five cents. I had it put up on the website because, so people know about it. But I think people who need to know about it probably already know about it. Which they can get this money.
No. I, I'm a little confused on, on this process. Right now, we're being billed by Wired West.
No.
No, I mean by Westfield. All right. Now, at some point, isn't this supposed to go to the town and then we pay the town that a principal is paid to Westfield and then the town makes money on this?
We, well, it's, you do now. What, what happens is, they, they collect the money for us.
Yeah.
Okay, and then based upon however many subscribers we have, we get reimbursed. And they keep the twenty, well, at the moment, it's what, twenty nine? So they keep that, and then we get the rest of it.
Okay, now where does that go?
It comes back to the town.
Yeah, it goes back to the town. I cannot come to the town.
The Enterprise has a revenue cost, it is your own general fund.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanna know where it goes.
Yeah.
Well, all of it comes to Blanford. If you pay, when you pay your eighty five dollars.
Yeah.
It comes to, through electronically to what the
Yeah, it's, it sits in an account that's been established for.
For.
Enterprise. Yeah.
All right, you can't touch it until we budget for it in the next fiscal year. So it's, it's just.
So it's just accumulating?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right.
No, it's not. Well, yes. So your eighty five dollars comes here when you pay. I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
What eighty five dollars I paying a hundred and seven?
Because you have a phone, so the two of them. Good, I'm glad you're paying your bill. A town I don't think has a phone, right? And Kara is bound eighty five. This is the bill that we pay Westfield.
Yeah. Okay.
How is that money?
Now, but the phone, the phone end of it stays with Westfield. Where does it come?
We get, the phone is.
We have another company that contracts for that.
Well, well, what are we paying for the phone? Anyway, whatever the, the cost is, okay? It's the same thing. Part of the full amount that we pay fifteen dollars or whatever for the phone.
Yeah.
Westfield is charging twelve ninety nine.
Okay.
Okay, so we're paying fourteen, charging fourteen, so the two dollars stays with us.
Yeah, but we're still under a hundred. I'm paying a hundred and seven, so.
Well, then you gotta remember, there's also other things that
Fees.
Fees and things that are.
No, the only fees are on the phone, taxes and fees.
I, I messaged with you, but.
Okay. With the money, pay taxes and no matter, no matter what, what company you use the phone, you'd have to be paying.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's, I understand.
So. Goes into him, goes, it goes into, goes out.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I'm back.
You're back.
Taken back over.
If I may, I'm gonna take the time to show you, where do we stand? So today. I'll show you the other one first. This one. This right here, we have a six hundred and eight premises in Blanford. Five hundred and eight have signed, have applied either for cold drop or for service. Which is eighty three point five five percent.
Great.
Pretty darn.
When Tarek Road is gonna be up and running?
Was that?
Someone's asking.
What'd you say?
When is Tarek Road gonna be up and running?
Our mother's complaining.
They are going to be not December, no. November.
They're building that now. Okay, just curious.
I, I don't have that.
That's, just curious.
It's coming.
But F A O, F A O S two is, is being built right now, so. Okay. Anybody who's, who's in that. And is that our last area?
No.
When do we think that we will be done and everyone will be online?
We were talking about that because, you mean, the whole town?
Yep.
It look, I would say early in, in December. Because once Sir Texas done, then it takes two weeks for Westfield to do the testing. And that is, is what FSA three is in that. Which is down.
Down my way.
Russell stage. They're pretty much ready. They've done all the things in two, so they'll start connecting up. Once they finish three, they'll start connecting people to, in two, which is where Eric Road and down. Then we go to five, which is southwest Blanford. Which is another story, but. See, you see here, this is the the six hundred and eight, and it's broken out by FSA. So this is where all the customers are. And so in three, there are fifty five.
I don't think you're sharing.
I thought I was sharing.
No, so you're not sharing that page?
I think he's looking at that page.
How do I do that?
We're looking at it.
I do.
Hi, Wendy.
You're sharing screen? Oh, I see. Oh, I see. Okay. I have to do it each time?
Hi Wendy, are you, do you need me?
There. Okay, there.
She's still there.
So there's, there's the data which, which I was, that I was just showing you, okay? This, this shows the number of people that signed up and right here. So the number, the total number of people in that FSA. And the number of actually.
So what do you need from us? Anything?
Not here, not on this. I'm just informed.
Okay.
No. Just go talk to people who haven't signed up.
Yes, yes.
Just, we did have on the agenda Geo Cluster.
Yeah, but I forgot to tell. Well, all right, you don't care that? Yeah, I just wanted to get you guys up to date.
You're doing a good job, Peter.
Yeah, all right. Well, do you have any questions? That I can answer? Cuz I, we have about a hundred people who need to contact. Who's that? We don't have, we don't, we don't know. I don't, we only have their address.
That'll get us to the one hundred percent.
Right.
Well, I don't think we'll ever get to a hundred percent. But it's, it's gonna be close.
We're trying to contact people who, who said no. Well, if you said no, you said no.
That's such a pretty good.
Okay, so. Yeah, so I know, I know who hasn't signed up. I have, that's all. These are the addresses that have. I'm not gonna see that. Crazy. Stop here.
So are we, are we, you good with us, Peter? Unless you have any questions for us. I don't. I'm sure that Josh is gonna fill me in. On what I missed.
Kara's name. Kara. Let's go to more.
These are all signed. It looks like I signed up.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
So that's. Yeah.
I don't know.
It's took a time.
Did I come in and sign them this week?
We wanna make sure we add that, so that's.
You can't forge my signature either, cuz it's too bad.
I meant to put the update.
Thank you guys for coming in. I appreciate it, especially in the rain. So, um we've done everything except for six A. You guys skipped that one. Wanna go back to the review?
Yep.
Dave, you wanna come on up and join us?
Yep.
All right. I like the beard. This is new.
That's what happens when you go on vacation, right?
Yeah, so relaxed. No, it wasn't relaxing? I'm sorry.
No.
All right. Okay, so, um, the only thing I didn't have, I might, what was the date of hire? Did you guys have that?
June thirtieth?
June thirtieth.
July one.
Okay. Um, and Josh, is this? No, this is a did we have, um the
Identified goals.
Identified goals.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I mean. I know transition and management is one.
Yeah. No, I, I had it. At home, I believe, and I have a find, find.
We wrote them down. I remember writing them down.
Yeah, looking back at the minutes to, to see if we had it recorded, but.
Could be in this pile of things there. Very handy. I know that we wrote it down, cuz I remember sort of hashing it out. We were kinda trying to come up with something that would be which makes me upset because I really wanna touch on those goals. That's the whole point of this. Joanne, do you remember anything about, you're looking in the meetings? Was it when we were going over the contracts? Would we have written anything in the, we wouldn't have written anything in the contract about the goals?
That was like three days ago. Send that out.
Was it, was it in July? It was as early as July.
This is October, sort of in August.
Um. Okay. Do you remember what any of those were?
Well, I know one was just management transition, transition. So taking on the role as department head. Meeting with folks from departments, understanding, building those relationships and connections and making sure that the transition how you process warrants and handle payroll, things like that, that, that was part of that management transition. The other one, I think, which is existing projects, not necessarily, right, like made waving a magic wand and having it done in three months, but instead following through, starting, making sure that you know, the process is, continues. And then those are the two that I recall, and I just can't remember the third one.
One of them had to do one piece of equipment with the, was there a new vehicle or something? I can't remember. Maybe I'm thinking fire. Okay, so then, so we have, have you seen the form that we use for?
I saw it briefly.
So we have a form that we use for our performance reviews. We have the ninety day, and then we'll do it, start with an annual one after this. So we have Um, so we have uh one, two, three, four, five, six, seven um different categories that we'll talk about. Job technical knowledge, problem solving, decision making, et cetera. Um, in each category, we could have rated you uh one through five. One starts with unsatisfactory, which means that um the responsibilities have not been met and that you don't demonstrate necessary knowledge, skills and abilities. Um, two is improvement needed, which is actually a pretty good place to be, um so not, it just means not always meeting responsibilities and objectives. Um, demonstrating some of the requisite skills and ability, knowledge of the job, but additional training or commitment is.
Right.
Um, three is meeting those expectations, um, the objectives of the position. Which I think is kind of hot, what for me, when I'm doing the reviews, when it, when you meet those expectations, there's like, kind of like, well, where do we go from there?
Right.
Um, then we've got the exceeds expectations, um, so you're achieving them frequently, exceeding expectations and responsibilities, and then there's the outstanding. Um, which is exceeds all expectations for responsibilities and objective skills, superior knowledge of major aspects of the total job and experience nature. Um, just so you know, that's what we're gonna look at each one, uh we'll talk about the topic and then where we rated you and we'll just discuss a little bit. So the first one is job technical knowledge, um that's possessing and demonstrating a thorough understanding and working knowledge of all phases of the job. Including various techniques and skills necessary for efficient completion of all tasks, remaining up to date on changes or trends and technical knowledge related to the job. And understanding the impact of your job on other functions or departments and businesses. Um, so we'll start with Tom, do you wanna tell us?
Well, I feel he meets our expectations there. A little early in his. Tenure with us to. For him. To exceed their expectations because I don't think he knows what they all are yet.
Very well put.
So that was my, my uh, my thoughts on that.
I had the same, I had meets expectations, I was kind of wavering, cause I was like, well, I still think that, you know, you need improvement, but I think everyone, you know.
Nobody's perfect.
But um I went with meets expectation, I think you came into the job with a a wealth of background knowledge on as far as the technical.
Mm-hmm.
Um, part of the job and what's needed. Um, what's required, but I was like, so I was kind of like in between those, like there's still some improvement area where improvement needed, but I definitely see that you're, you know, close to meeting expectations. CJ, what do you have?
Oh, I put needed improvement, improvement needed, and the reason why I I came out with that, Dave, was I. I was disappointed because. You were given, go ahead for like George and Warren Road, you you came in here and then we had all this rain and it's not your fault. But I don't think you you met, met it head on as I I would have thought, only because. You know. The, the, some of the roads are still, you know, need repair and uh it's. You know, I I don't see anything happen, I see that uh Bert Hill was finally addressed. And uh, but George Mallard, that's, you know, I I see you got the roller over there, so I imagine that's your next uh attempt that. Trying to get that reconciled and then Chester Road, that's, that's a smooth bus road and I think that should be. You know, a priority, especially this time or this year.
You talk about uh George Mallard, um. Have you looked at the other roads lately?
Yeah.
Have you looked at um, Motor Swamp?
No, I haven't been out that way.
That's, that's got a brand new cover pipe in it and it's been graded and materialized first time in probably quite a few years. I started out far with all with things going on, because. Home material from Talino's to all the way to here, it's a lot more money.
Yeah.
So I decided to start from Motor Swamp, work my way inward till I got to a point of in town. Then I decided that I don't need Talino to deliver no more, because I have the ability to do the smaller rolls, to finish them all.
And save funding.
And save, and save funding. Um. Motor Swamp is done, Davis is done, Hiram Blair is done, Huntington Road is done, have you ever done Huntington Road lately?
Huntington Road looks great, I walked it the other day and I wasn't afraid to fly it off a cliff.
You know, you you talk about communicating with other people, I communicated with the town of Washington. And I borrowed the roller, cause I knew we were gonna need it, cause I just, we only have a month for a roller to use on these dirt roads. It cost me uh forty-five, hundred and fifty dollars a month to rent it. Um. All I gotta do for this roller for him, I have to choose the oils in it, that's three hundred hours. So I think it's a pretty good deal.
That's great.
So. Yes, so what I did for Huntington Road is I started the guys, well, James at that time, he went down both sides, both sides of the road. And he dug the ditch out again, where it belongs, and once that was all done over with, he rolled it all, not just down it, both sides. Into the, into the ditch, because that is the most problem there is, is that the culverts, you know, ditches don't get rolled. And that leaves them open up for water to get into, once you pack it, you know, the water has less ability to get in there and start running down. He also put in three or four runoffs on the left hand side, which is deadly needed, it needed it bad. Um. Then Matt and Andrew went down to the other one, the eight road, and did more work down there, bringing it back in and pulling it all in and putting material down, and rolling all of that. Then we left and they went down to uh Mulan, put material on Mulan and rolled it. Then we left, they left there and they went over to Sanderson Brook and did that whole road, which hasn't been done in probably a while. Um, then I, I got, it was um Wednesday, Thursday, I talked to James about it. I go, okay, as soon as you're all done with all that, I want you to take your roller and everything else you can, you take it over to um Mallard. Cause when it stops raining, again, I hope soon, I'm, I'm gonna have a roll Mallard, just a hill for now. I'm gonna have a pack it all down as far as you can, and not just go up and down, both sides, across the road on both edges.
David, are you gonna, you gonna rig it first?
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna do nothing yet, cause I'm gonna have the mini up there digging. And it makes no sense to put many, many up there and have it all raped and it's all looking pretty, when I got the mini going up and down.
Yeah.
Redefining both eye, edges of the road. And then this week, I'm gonna run over and talk to um Joe over there. And for, and coordinate with him on when is a good time to install that cover pipe. Once that's all done. I'm gonna take the edge of his, the top, the top part of his driveway is. Up, up the road, going towards the, the, the riding area.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have that all dug out and swaled in, probably about two or three feet back, so the wire does have a place to go.
You, you, you mentioned uh Gil Land Road and Sanderson Brook Road.
Yep.
Now, the guys worked on that road and when you go down it, there's. It's almost flat and the windrows on the both sides of the road are blocking the ditches. And uh, so. What, what you essentially got is a swimming pool, if we got more heavier rain and uh. Sanderson Brook is similar and.
And I, I wasn't there for that.
No, I know you weren't, but you know, there.
Has to be taught, the operator has to be taught how to, how to clean that.
Yeah, and and that was what I was gonna bring up, is that uh. Matt's pretty good on the grater and I'm, I'm thinking that, you know. If we could get someone with experience on the grater to teach Matt.
Mm-hmm.
How to do the, do the ditches with the grater.
Yep.
And get that material out of there, get the bad material loaded on the truck, get it out of there, mix what's there and then. Put a crown on the road so that the water actually goes to the ditches, you know, and uh. I, I ha- I haven't seen that network, I know you weren't there.
Yeah.
But uh, you know.
That road's always been flat, though.
No, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, it is, it's really flat, but if you want, if you wanna put a crown in, you have to put more material on it.
Well, yeah, we gotta get that material that's been plowed out.
Right.
Flowering, so you gotta get that out of the ditches too.
Yeah.
Alright.
You know.
Um, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that, I think part of what makes it, what's hard for me in this situation is. I know that we are supervisors, but I don't feel like the Slutworth is a direct supervisor, I feel like Josh and you have way more conversations on a regular basis to know exactly what's going on.
Every day, every day.
Every day, lucky you. Lucky Josh, um, so it's, it is hard for me, I mean, I think TJ and Tom have a more of an eye for roads, um. I just see that, you know, there's no more edge to fall off on Huntington, I think that's great. So, I don't know if there's anything we can, like maybe when we do a highway super, Josh, can we like. Get something from you for, I don't know, like it might be helpful just so that we can see that, cause I, like, I'm not hearing, no one's coming to me to complain.
Mm-hmm.
So kudos to you, because if, if there were, you know, complaints, then surely they would be coming to Slutworth, I don't know, but you guys, but I'm not hearing complaints, so.
I haven't heard anything.
So that's, you know, one of the biggest things that I sort of go off when I'm doing reviews, because I don't really have, I mean, you and I have had some conversations, but not. Um, okay, so the next one we've got, problem solving and decision making, um, I went with meets expectations, still. Obviously, still some improvement needing, you're, you're new into this position as the superintendent, you know. Um, so all of these experiences are gonna be new to you, being the one in charge and having to um make decisions. Um, I know that it's been tricky with Russell Sage Road and the situation there. Um, I know that's been a difficult one and I know that their, your hands were tied in some of those situations, um.
That has gone out to good.
Great.
Um. Last day is thirteenth of October.
That's great.
Um, it should, if the bid's coming good. Hopefully, we like what they say and and all that stuff, hopefully, maybe a week later, I ca- I can't guarantee, it's up, it's up to the contractor, not me.
Okay.
You know, but it, we're at their whim now, when can they get him to do it? Okay?
Um, but I, I am seeing growth in that area from you, you know, the first week or two, I feel like. You know, when you got on and trying to figure out, you know, processes, I'm definitely seeing growth in that as well as confidence, so.
That was definitely learning the way to land.
Yeah.
You know, when it's appropriate, you know, revenue sources and when to go up for procurement and when, you know, it's, it's. That was the, the, the learning curve, but certainly I noticed they uh coming around and understanding it a lot better and starting to get more proactive on. Other issues like we were dealing with. The roads that had to do, that were deteriorated from the rainstorms.
Yes.
Um, and what our plan of action is gonna be there. Um, with funding that's coming out, I've meant, so it's, it's starting to make sense the more you work with the stokes, the more you work with Furca, do their procurement program. I can see it growing, they're getting better, so.
Do you guys have anything to add to that?
On planning and organization. But the only thing I'm gonna relate to Dave, and I think he's related it to me once, but. People that have come to me and said, well, you know, it was a nice day today and I went by and they were all in the garage, why? Oh, I don't have the answer for that, don't intend to get the answer for that, but I think. Maybe that's something you may have to use your boot for now and that.
Well, I know for a little while, they were in there because I need to get that trailer fixed. Um, I had a slight number of boards to get done, to get it so I can go pick that roller up. And stuff like that, and there is some maintenance stuff that had to be done, and you don't wanna do stuff outside. Um, we did have the, once they all finished up downs, down the other side of town, they brought everything in to the, to the garage and they sat there and they went through and they. Checked everything out and greased, greased the grater all up and greased the uh, the trucks and everything else up and the other equipment. Uh, which was, it was, it needed it, you know, there needs more of it.
There's usually a reason for things, I mean, I, you know, I usually tell people, I don't micromanage, we hire experts to do things. We're not gonna micromanage them, if Dave needs them in the garage, they're in the garage.
I mean. Yeah, they're a little slow sometimes, you know, but they're getting better at it, you know, and I was, I was really proud of Jim, or say James, for the last week, you know.
Good, that went well.
He, uh, I gave him a list of tasks to get done and uh he got them all done, which was, you know, quite impressive.
Good.
So that made me feel really happy that, that I know I have the one vacation.
That you, makes you glad to see something like that.
Yeah, it does, it does, you know.
Um, the next one we have is. Oh, sorry, please speak.
Thank you. Uh, I, I got you down as uh meeting expectations. Uh, my only thing is, is that you had contacted someone to do the catch basins. And uh, you know, clean the catch basins and the cover.
No, not, not, not clean the catch basins, replace the catch basins.
Okay, and.
All five of them.
And what about uh, like so, somebody's uh, where the culverts are, they're, they're pretty well blocked.
Mm-hmm.
And uh. I don't know what your game plan is on that.
If I see them blocked and I know they're blocked, I'll have some of the guys out and do it, you know? Um, it's getting, it's getting to that time of season right now that we needed to pull back the reins on maintaining or taking care of some of these gravel roads. And start focusing on catch basins or. Um, cover pipes, for instance, if you go down Russell Stage, have you looked at those there? There's, there's a couple of catch bases there on the left hand side going down that are plugged a little bit.
I haven't noticed, but I don't.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's just that, like, like on uh, all right, Blair Road, in front of the cemetery, there's, there's one uh.
Yes.
That's pretty well plugged.
That was cleaned out once.
Yeah.
All of them were cleaned out once, both sides of the road were cleaned out earlier this year. Um, the problem is, is the material that's in it, where it comes from, all it is, is a whole bunch of fines.
Yeah.
Coming from the size of the road, down the road or whatever, and it piles up there. Now, if we had the ability to turn everything into pace whales. Wouldn't be a bad idea, all you would get with a little bit of the fines, we would get a whole lot of water coming through, and it would exit.
One thing, one thing we found out years ago when I was there. We had one that was, say it was half full of fines if we dug a uh slum at the end of it.
Mm-hmm.
When you got a good rainstorm, the water going through it would take them out and fill out them, to clean the button. Otherwise, you're there with a fire truck, a fire hose, and you're covered with mud.
Mm-hmm.
And by eleven o'clock, nobody's in a good frame of mind and nothing's getting done.
Yeah, just like the, there was a uh, a catch basin plugged up on uh, on Russell Stage number twenty-five or twenty-six. Um. We cleaned it all out and we took the new tanker down there, backed it up to it and then opened it up. Leaned it right on out, which is really nice. Um, it's nice to have the ability to use a fire truck to do that kind of thing, you know, um. I'm trying to to start working on as much drainage there is, I'm capable of doing with what I have to do with. Um, for that, well, I'll talk to later about that, keep going.
Alright, next up, we have planning and organization. Um, I've got you, so this one is planning effectively to produce the required volume to meet production. Um, utilizing appropriate resources, meeting or exceeding deadlines without jeopardizing quality. Um, seeing opportunities to increase production and eliminate waste and the ability to re-prioritize as required to meet newer changing demands. Um, so for this one, I've got you the same place, um in between that meets expectations and improving. Um, I'm not sure about all meeting deadlines, I know, I don't know what's been within your control, um, what hasn't been, you know, I know that Russell State was sort of out of your control. Um, I know that you've been really cognizant and creative with the budget, uh so I appreciate that, eliminating waste.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are my notes for that one, do you guys have anything you wanna add to that one?
On communication.
We are on planning and organization.
Well, we, I just.
You said that one already for you, okay.
Yeah.
What do you got? We're good, okay, um. Communication, verbal and written, um, I've got you the same spot, I said, um. You've responded to any of my concerns or questions in an appropriate manner, um, you meet with Josh on a regular basis. The only thing I don't know about, I haven't had any concerns from residents, the only thing I don't know about are your work with your subordinates, is I haven't heard anything. Are your work with your subordinates, because I haven't heard anything, either good nor bad. So, um, that's the area that I'm not clear on.
I have no problems, we have no problems, everything's good. See, you know, when I started off in a couple towns ago, and what really, what really irked me was that. We would go out there and start a job. For a day or two, and leave. And start something else, and then start something else. And I was saying, no, this is, I don't wanna be that kind of person. I wanna be able to go out there and finish the job. And just wipe it all, done.
Yeah.
Um.
Crossed off your list.
Yeah, well. Five and a half years later. It ain't possible. You do, you can't finish a real project, um, but I feel like, for instance. I had Jeff trees come up today. He called me last week. He said he'll be here Monday to do some tree trimming. I says, alright, great, so I'll, I'll get you, I'll, I'll, I'll get you a, um. Please detail, because I'm gonna do Russell Stage and I'm gonna do Chester. So, um, I called Tammy and talked to her to say, I need a couple officers these days, she says, okay. An hour later, she sent me a message, she says, I only got one. I says, okay, so I gotta back up and regroup. I says, okay, so Jeff pulls in, says, I don't have one, but you can take Matt with you. You know, so Matt spent a half a day with him. Um. Tomorrow I'll have a police officer to finish up, because he's, well, he's gonna spend two days. On Chester Road, starting from Beulah and going down, as far as, um, Bob, Bob's house. On the right hand side, yep.
Yeah.
He's gonna clean, clean those trees up too, because I talked to Bob about. I'll take them all down, I said, I can't do that.
Yeah.
Uh, then, once he's all done with that, he's gonna start on Russell Stage coming up the hill, the house with the view.
Yeah.
Just below that, he's gonna come up for two days and come all the way up through. Um, that's the way I need two police officers for that section.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Things, um, some things do work good, sometimes they don't.
Realize. Do you guys have anything to add for communication?
No, no.
No.
You know, I put down that he meets our expectations. He doesn't really know what they are.
Well, you wanna surprise him.
No, no surprises.
Yeah. This is raining help in this crisis.
Um, next one's pretty similar, it's the interpersonal skills and teamwork, um, same place, I really, um, like I said, I haven't heard anything from any employees. Um, or, um, townspeople that have had any negative interactions. Um, so I really don't have anything to report on that until we get one. Which I'm sure we will.
Winter, winter's coming.
You're something.
I, I, I did have, uh, I, I. Couple compliments. A while ago, when, when we first started getting all that rain, um, this lady who owns a, a house up on Hiram Blair, second, first one in.
Yeah.
She called me and stated that, um. The person that, that lives there says the road is pretty washed out, you can barely get out. I says, no, no problems, she says, no, I'll go and take a look at it. And, uh. So I went and looked at it, says, yes, saying myself, I'll look at the grater over the next day. So, uh. I pulled up into the guy's driveway, went and talked to him, he goes. Wow, thank you. You know, so I says, yeah, so that's why you know, make sure it's, it's okay, so I got four wheel drive and get out of here. So. Like an hour or so later, I get a text from her, she goes, you didn't have to do that, but I really, really appreciate it, you know.
Yeah, that's nice.
So, and the other one was over on Gore Road. Um, one, one of the houses over there, um, was having the trees, they didn't want the trees marked. You know, and. I don't know if you know what I've done over there, or.
Yeah, I know you were clearing a lot.
Um, I talked to Ever Source.
Yeah.
To Barry, and he came over and we talked about it. Um, he goes, yeah, it'd be really nice to get rid of a lot more trees. I says, okay, says, let. Let me know if there's any issues with any homeowners, I'll go talk to them.
Yeah.
The next day, Jim, Jim came out from Aspen and we talked, and he left and I went to talk to the guys who was cutting. He goes, I go, you have any problems? And he goes, well, yes, it's, you know, people, I says, okay, don't worry about it. I walked over, talked to him, and, uh, we all, they all, they all came out. Both of them walked down the street, you know, and explained to him, I says, you know, this ash tree here is, it's leaning.
Yeah.
You'd like to get rid of it, because I don't want you to have to pay for it later. You know, that falls down, you gotta get rid of the wood.
Yeah.
She goes, oh, okay, yep, and we went down a little farther, I picked like six trees, she says, yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
You know, and on the way up, you know, and the gentleman said, you know, says, I really appreciate you coming out and talking to us. I says, well, that's, that's what I wanna try and do, you know.
That's great, the more people get out and talk to you, they know your name and your face, that's great. Yep, absolutely, and more likely just call you if they have a question, which is easier for everyone.
Right, and that's what I did at the. One of our support meetings we had there, we were talking about it.
Oh, with depth. Um, on Gore Road.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and, uh. I, I, I said to him, if anybody has any questions, let me know. So, and I haven't had any problems.
That's good. It was mostly good doobies.
Something for one of your employees. Jim did a good job for us on that tree down up on a Chester Road that night.
Yes, yep.
He did an excellent job.
Kara did an excellent job getting me home. Go all the way to the state police barracks and.
Oh, no.
Well, I wasn't sure.
John concerning. He doesn't, he can't, out of the driveway, left, right. Um, so the next one we have up is adherence to company policy and safety. Um. I have meets expectations that I haven't really heard any, again, not hearing anything, otherwise I haven't been in the highway garage to see if it's. Do you guys have anything?
I've been out in Sheena Met Word, out on the road, they're all wearing their safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They aren't wearing vests when they're in the garage, but they can see one another when they're in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everything is being adhered to as well as can be expected.
And from just driving by, the garage seems orderly.
That's why I try to keep everything out of there.
Out of the line of sight.
Yes.
Next one up is self-management skills. This one is, um, confidence, uh, remaining in control when handling difficult and new situations.
Definitely needs improvement.
Demonstrating adaptability and flexibility, um, when handling change and demonstrating a sense of cooperative-ness by remaining open and positive when receiving direction. Or constructive, um, feedback. So, um, like I said, I definitely seen your confidence grow since day one. And you and I had a talk, which I think was constructive feedback, which I thought was really positive conversation initially. Um, it was a few weeks after you started.
Yeah.
Um, just about, um. Different ways, procedures, policy and whatnot. Um, so I, again, have you in the same place that I've been radioing along for this one. Um, I think that you, I know that you still have room to grow here as far as confidence and just. Being, you know, sure of, of everything and, and steps to take and, you know, what comes for a second and third. But I see that happening, I'm not, I don't have any immediate concerns.
We all have room to grow here, if I live long enough, maybe I'll be a. I, I just changed my. Evaluation here because of this conversation we've been having. I see I, I was kinda wrong, so I feel that you meet the expectations. And you are growing with the job, so. Uh, what can, what else can I just say, you know?
That's my, my favorite quote is, um, it's okay to change your mind, it means you gain new knowledge.
Yeah, but you're a woman, that's expected. Yeah, you better receive some flowers or something.
I like Dave because I can. I can give him. Proud. And he gives it back.
We know that's your.
No, that's, I mean, is the only way. You know, if I'm unhappy with something, and I talk to Dave about it, you know, and he gives it back to me, while I couldn't get there, because I was working here. Okay, I understand that, all right, I want someone that's gonna come back and that way there, we're gonna, you know.
Communicate.
You know.
Um, so, so we've gone through all of those, um, areas, we wrote down some of the goals. Um, do you have any goals that you would like to? Work towards for your annual review, anything specific?
Too young for that.
I, well, we all know that we got the, or in the works of getting the mask grant.
I know, congratulations on that, that's awesome.
For you, yes, for me, no. There's a lot of moving parts, and it's judge, juggling. Two and a half projects.
Okay.
Um, the garage.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, getting, yeah.
No, it's the, it's the garage, it's the intersection, it's the road, it's a lot of moving parts.
And the North Lampard Road, um, I got a. Email from this gentleman from Solar Company. Out there in North Lampard, we got, they, they got fined. By the, the EP, I had a chat with him. Um, they wanna put a culvert in, in, okay, and I talked to, I talked to, um, DOT, he says. Don't listen to him. Says, you gotta get it engineered to recover it in. You know, the, the, the stream regulations and all that stuff, I says, okay. And I, I told the gentleman, I says, you know. Yeah, he asked me, do you have equipment? I says, I got equipment, yeah. Um, I'm not gonna do it. You know, because it's gonna take a lot of time in the place where you want it. I don't have the razor rail, but probably about three and a half feet.
Is this gonna affect the work that we're gonna do?
No, 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 this is on Gibbs Road.
Yes.
You get that low spot.
Yeah.
Oh, that's where we wanna put this culvert in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where's your grant at?
The other side of the road.
Okay, so for your next, for your annual review, which Josh, you know, when we do annual reviews, do we tend to do that?
Yeah, well.
Well, we wanna be at least ninety days out.
You know what I mean, getting ready to.
So for your ninety day review, which we're talking about, end of spring, mid-spring, um. Where would you like us to, like, where would you shoot to be with the North Lampard Road? Project, what do you think is a realistic goal?
April, May, March, April.
You'll be, so we don't actually put the, our, the bid out until December, correct, I think for the.
There's all.
Yeah, but we wanna have it.
There is a, uh.
We wanna be one of the first ones in the spring.
So would you be shooting to do some, some of the prep work with our guys?
Oh, definitely, um, right now, I've talked to a couple other towns. Um, I talked to Mr. Stokes about it, give me some guidance on who I can communicate with, he gave me a couple of names I can call.
Okay.
The process of it. Um, he knows this gentleman up in North Adams who's requesting some culvert pipe. And, uh, for his projects to come up this year, and he said that he's like four to six months out.
Okay.
Um. Another guy said, yes, I'm supposed to get it last month, and they're saying end of this month. So, that's what I'm doing tomorrow, I'm calling ADS. Advanced Drain Systems. And get a, get a, a straight name, number, and timeframe.
Okay.
For the culverts I'm gonna be needing. Roughly, probably about fourteen to fifteen of them. Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh.
So timeframe for the culverts?
It all depends on the weather.
Yeah.
That depends on our winter.
So, um, so timeframe for the culverts, maybe beginning phases coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm, be nice to start like March.
Okay.
You know, and do some, um, drainage work on, on each, I, I'm gonna start. An odor site and work inward.
Okay.
Um, that's gonna be probably the easiest to do. Um, culvert pipes through there would be, you know, halfway decent, don't have to worry about any kind of, um, conservation and all that stuff.
Okay. So the work, do we going all the way to the end to Algeria?
No.
No.
Just to the line, just to, uh, Lincoln Road.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but we are going through the village.
Yes, through the village.
Okay.
Yeah, three miles or whatever it is, I think it was, I saw. Yeah.
How much?
Yeah. It's seems a lot longer though.
It does feel.
It feels like six, seven miles.
You can air.
I think the interesting part of this project too is remember we have that intersection.
Yes.
Work going on.
Where Gore Road, oh, oh, you mean at the end?
Yes, yeah, that's another reason why I wanna start.
Start, that makes sense.
And have it work this way.
Because we gotta have a lot of discussion about that.
So, by April, May, we should have more planning and.
Yes.
In process for the new intersection, so the planning stages for that. Um, I don't think that the garage is much in your hands, I don't think the timeframe for what's happening with the garage is really in your hands.
No, it's not, the thing is though, that there's a lot of stuff that needs to be removed and relocated there. Um. I finally got hold of somebody that will take our, um, leftover stone and asphalt and all that, we can take it to Palmer.
Okay.
Um, for free.
Great.
Um, what he's gonna cost us is to haul it down there. So rainy days is a good day to haul it.
Okay.
You know. Um, when I was talking to Mr. Stokes, he suggested that we may look into, we should look into maybe a, a project manager. For this project. oversee it.
The North Lampard Road?
Yes.
Would, would that be within the million dollar?
Um.
Was that written into the grant, or is that something?
I don't, I'm not sure, I'll, I'll double check on that.
Okay, I mean, I'm not against it, I think it's a good idea, we haven't done that a lot in the past, and I think that it would be very helpful with organization, I just. Don't know funding wise.
Yeah, um, I talked to a gentleman, and he had two million dollar grant. And, uh, it cost him twenty thousand dollars to do all the.
Okay.
Access. Yeah.
I think that would be worth it, if it means that it's, you know, supposed to be something that's smooth while you're still balancing.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, Wendy, this, this, we'll, we'll touch base when we meet, and. There. Maybe you can help me brainstorm through this, um, particular scenario that's going on, uh, but what. There is, there's, there's the procurement for the road, but the, the intersection where the, the road meets is potentially gonna change and. So there's a design phase for that, and just having like this chicken and the egg problem and timing and, and between what's. Potent, what is ultimately two separate projects, but they're both interconnected somehow, so we'll, we'll touch base and. We'll figure something out.
Yeah.
I don't know, but from what I've seen on it, what, what you're intending to do. Is I think if we move that further away from the building. And go like where the road, where North Lampard Road comes out on twenty three now, all right. If you were just to eliminate that angle and make it a right angle. You know, and that way there, people can, it's a short distance, you know, what, what is maybe. So it treated the most.
So the plan was to connect the park with the grass.
Right.
So tomorrow, tomorrow, the advisory committee's gonna meet with, um. The engineers, what's their name again?
The ones that did the.
GZA, yeah, GCA.
Okay.
And share a schematic, uh, conceptual of.
Yeah, what they had drawn up.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
You know, when you come down.
We don't know until we see.
Yeah.
How they made that so that you could swing to the right and see up the road, that's what my recommendation is for the end of North Lampard Road.
I'm not the engineer.
Yeah. Do you have any comments that you want us to know?
Tomorrow at three thirty.
I got your review, three thirty.
All right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, lucky them, um, do you have any comments that you would like us to know on your, um, evaluation?
I've got a couple project, projects coming up for next year.
Okay.
Um. What I would like to, really like to try to do, it all depends on. What I would like to, really like to try to do, it all depends on how much time is taken away from me, but. Um, I was thinking of having Cook's Road overlaid.
Okay.
Have, get it done over with. So that's all taken care of. Um, finish up the drainage on that, on both sides of the road, put some material in it, cause it's still eroding occasionally. Um, my timeframe for that, I can't guarantee it, I'm looking at probably maybe May, June.
Okay.
All right, um. And then hopefully, if everything else goes well, um, I'm gonna have the guys up over on Beach Hill. And work on the drainage and all that, all the way up for about maybe three quarters of mile up the hill. Get it all set and ready for overlay on that also. So that's my ideas.
Okay.
I can't guarantee.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Uh, just a question on uh. This project on North Lanford Road. Everything goes well. If everything goes well, all right, if it don't. We're gonna have to think of a contingency plan.
Well.
Depends on the winter, I guess.
Well, we, um.
No, just for thought, you know, I mean, you got enough on your plate, I'm just putting a little braving on it.
A question. If. There becomes a flaw in the oil here. Will the state allow you to use ninety money to just overlay that road? Or are they gonna want you to grind it?
Uh, if we don't use that money, we're, we're gonna have to reapply for it.
Yeah.
No, but my point was.
For the winter time?
Yeah, but if, if, if this strap grant or this grant.
Works grant, yes.
Falls through, for whatever reason. And you wanna use ninety money to overlay North Lanford Road. Will they allow you to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I was told that on all, we'd have to grant it.
You can overlay it, but you're gonna have to, you know, compassionately do it again anyway.
In about eight years.
I'm gonna go for eight years, I'll give you about three or four. Yes, yes. That's, that's the reason why I'm asking, you know, to hire somebody. Um, um, I really like, I really like to be, be able to have, you know, Rainy come in and give us, definitely give me a hand.
Yeah.
On all that stuff.
Nope, he said, should I get back to work already?
But I, I need, I need to have, I need to have your blessing on, on having him come in. Because I talked to him earlier. And the stuff we went through was like mind boggling, what has to be written down in the contract and so on and so forth. And he's done, he's done a lot of stuff. And I think he'd be a great asset.
Okay.
For this.
Yeah, absolutely, I think he would be a valuable person.
Um, I don't know how you wanna go about. Um, making contact with them and making a contract and hours, you know, that's.
Part time?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the first is gonna be, you know, getting the contract ready to be submitted. You know, um, I, I can do pretty much the labor part. With the guys, get the stuff ready, but when it's coming down to, um. The paperwork itself. It is, it has to be done in a certain order, everything has to be done, and the project has to be done in a certain order.
So you're saying Josh, bringing him on as a part time employee would be as opposed to a contractor?
Well, well, because we don't, there's no. Well, unless he uses his expense account, there's no uh line item. Um, that is flexible enough to. Hire him as a contractor except for expenses, which is mostly miscellaneous, so you might be able to use that.
I think part time would be better for the town.
Part time, we can pick it up, it'll be a, I believe, part timers.
Yeah, he.
What about hiring a master project manager?
No, so there's no flexibility in his budget except for his expense line item, that he can certainly.
We have to put project manager up to bid, I think, right, you can't just hire.
So, I'll have to look into that.
I mean, if it's ten thousand dollars, I guess that's under, or is that where it meets the.
Wendy's probably much more skilled than I am.
I was gonna make sure that you had the procurement manual uh in your office, but I'm pretty sure I have it on my computer, so I can.
My bulletin board.
Yeah, that, perfect, okay.
Mary?
Um, yeah, did Randy take the retirement?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's just to let you know that we are budgeted. For five total, including highway super, right?
Yes, I, I've got.
But we're at, we're at three full timers.
Right, so you got one more.
So we actually have one full time position, we're looking to go, which wouldn't be Rainy because he needs to do part time. That makes sense.
Um, so we can post that immediately, uh, but just before you do move on, that we um. Be sure that you vote to. Offer the job permanently, or are you getting rid of Dave?
Oh, no.
If you use that money for that other person to come on the highway. For this, is it going to harm your production? That you've got planned for our regular town work?
No.
Because I, I, I was under the impression that you wanted to hire the fourth man because you needed.
I do, I do.
Part time line item, I think.
Well, how much is it gonna cost for this part time person to?
That's what we need to find out.
Yeah.
Well, we've also had from July to now. We have been taking out of that. So there's some extra funding.
And then it depends on how many hours am I gonna need them, you know, I may need them for like ten hours or twelve hours.
Yeah.
In the beginning to get it organized and going, but after that, I may need them.
But I wanna show you get that fourth man.
Well, so did I, so did I.
So Wendy, Rainy, just to tell you, and Rainy was our previous um highway super, just in case you haven't gathered that already, question, Mary?
No, construction, a construction engineer.
Construction.
Yeah.
Still an engineer, right?
He would take care of the aspects of the road itself and get everything together. For that, Rainy's gonna be used for.
That's true, we can, we can hire, actually, we can go out and post a full timer and still, because we've been.
We still have money, yeah.
Without, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and without any part time, which we still money in that.
And we don't have, we don't have the part time line.
Okay.
So they're two different, they've got Rainy doing.
Right.
Consultant.
Yes.
You've got a construction engineer.
Yes.
Two different.
Or he wouldn't be consulting, he'll be a part time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we actively looking for number four?
We posted it on the town, I believe.
No, we haven't.
Oh, we haven't.
No, but we can do that tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, we posted when we were hiring our latest, and we didn't have.
Well, we got, we got.
We had Andrew, and we also had another.
Posted, and we only had one guy out with.
Yeah, cause we had somebody else come in, but he wasn't qualified.
Correct, I remember that.
And he is in the process of getting his license, but.
That's right.
But the problem is, is that you have to go to Devon's or to um Tom to, to take it. And he has name on the, on the list since probably August.
Yeah.
And I think that what's, what's going on is that. They're backdating people a year ago, whenever COVID hit, and they closed everything down.
Yeah.
So you, and they're only allowed to do a hundred people at a time. So I can't imagine how many people, you know, are applying for it.
Um, okay, so I think we're all set, do you have anything else for us? Josh has copies of your um. The reviews from us.
Okay.
You've got them all together. Um, I'm imagining that he'll give them to our HR department, is our HR department.
Richard, turn your head around.
Um, okay. So, we have department expense report, which.
Did you want a motion?
Oh, you need a motion.
Yeah, so just uh, we're, we're, we're now stepping out of uh this ninety day and uh prov- probationary periods.
Okay.
Permanent, so.
So, motion to hire Dave Waldron uh permanently, I mean, not forever. Highway superintendent, uh. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I, congratulations.
Thank you.
Or, you know. Oh, you did that, I know.
I know, we did, we did.
And this one's.
Yeah, but this is a new one, Tom.
This is a new one, but does it change that much in a week?
We.
What's the percentage that it changes?
It should be.
I don't know, I could have gone to.
Yeah, we're still at twenty five percent, we still should be around twenty five, twenty eightish percent.
One day, every, every uh warrant period, we get an updated all department expense summary. And so we just, we add that on the agenda to be sure that, you know, full transparency where departments are, give it this year and. It helps keep our finger on the pulse.
Um, I, we talked about a couple last time that. You guys were gonna touch base on, you were going to touch base with um. Treasures clerk. Sorry, it's at thirty seven, it's a little bit high.
Treewarden.
The tree warding, yeah.
Um, yeah, if you were sorry. We won't talk about external items. All right, um, yeah, and if you'll just let treasure clerk know, that's a bit. It's a little bit high, um. Yeah.
I don't even have access to it.
Are we doing anything about that?
No, because.
Since uh July seventeen fifteen, twenty nineteen.
No, police expenses.
Oh, remember, Tom, uh, we, we get the invoice for the full year from Chester and.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And then whatever's unspent comes back to us in the fiscal year.
But she's. Spent ninety one percent.
Cause we paid our full bill. Just like, try like the ambulance and stuff.
Um. On the topic of budget though, the FY twenty one has been closed last week.
I saw that, that's what might be a new record for Lanford. Uh, that was in September.
Uh, speaking of that.
Yeah.
I got a, a, uh. Email from Janice, remember that? Um, about chapter ninety money, two hundred and twenty seven hundred dollars was not funded through chapter ninety and all that stuff. And uh.
We don't use that very often.
I located it for her, which was quite happy.
Good attitude.
Do we have any idea when we're gonna do our classification hearing, it'd be nice to get that done before December?
Yep, a lot sooner rather than later, I think right now, all they're waiting for is to, the assessors is waiting for, um. To receive a building permit. Do their part, but that should be happening sooner than.
Listen, I, I learn as we go still. Little by little. All right, um. I think everything else looks pretty good, I'm getting into. Miscellaneous stuff here, water department. Yeah, everything else looks good, do you guys see anything else you can send or not? Uh, Josh, do we have any other new business?
No.
All right, um.
I, I wanna bring something up, I've heard a couple complaints about.
Oh, boy.
Our friend on uh the center of town there with all the uh trailers and stuff.
Down here?
Yeah. And.
On Main Road, Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As the Board of Health, been over?
I don't know.
Can we send building inspector or board health to take a look? Yeah, the old hair president.
Yeah. And uh, what's the address?
This is really their vehicles, they're great, they can put registration. Sunset Road.
It's on Main Street. It's. The building that has um, has like a front porch with a bunch of stuff on it.
Side, there's two trailers or three?
I think they're concessioners. Yeah, so that means you're gonna have to watch them like a hawk.
Oh, yeah.
And uh. It's beginning to get filed up and pretty unruly there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we'll send for building.
Now, when you go down. Twenty three.
Yeah.
And uh. There's a, a camper that set up, or that uh, that guy built the uh. Now, that's the same people, isn't it?
No.
No.
No, I thought that, I thought the tractor belonged.
No, I don't think so, because I've seen those people at that trailer.
Yeah.
And they're pretty clean cut.
Yeah.
Squirt away looking people.
The vines are growing around that tractor.
Yeah, I know, they'll get it out of there, the vines will hold it in there.
Alright, so. Was there anything else that, no, I think Halloween, we talked about Wendy, Wendy, when are you starting? Tuesday? Not tomorrow, Tuesday, not tomorrow, Tuesday, the following.
Yeah, no, I did it. Um, we talked about that earlier, Josh and I talked earlier today about a schedule for me, for he and I to um. Overlap, and we picked a couple days next week, we'll, I'll come in on Tuesday. And Friday and, or. I'm definitely coming in on Tuesday, uh, maybe Friday, but we will work. Um, as I, he may have shared this with any, any or all of you individually, I am very careful about COVID. Um, I always mask indoors, I'm generally not doing a lot of things, you know, that most people do. But um, I, I know I need to do hands on with Josh, you know, just, and I, I wanna meet his people in person or half of them at least, so. Um, so that is the plan, and Josh, if you wanted to say more.
Next week is kinda sort of my last week. Depending on what happened on November second, I was having a little nervous breakdown today, thinking about it, um. But um, I was gonna say, uh. I guess if I. Uh, as far as the leave of absence is concerned, if.
We didn't vote on it, you want us to vote on it? So, um, when do you wanna start?
So, the contract that the select board voted on tonight. I guess is up to. November ninth.
Yeah.
Right? Um. So we can do the leave of absence up to November nine.
Okay.
Uh, but you have that flexibility to. You can revisit the contract with Wendy and extend it um accordingly.
Okay. So it would be, you would be starting the eighteenth, October eighteen?
October eighteen, yeah.
Okay, so. So you'd be doing a leave of absence from October eighteenth through November ninth?
Use that first or.
Oh, it has to do with your ability to do what you need to do election wise, what needly do you have to do to make that work? Now he's voting it tonight, and then something changes.
You don't meet next week.
All right, I, I would make a motion. To uh. Grant Josh to leave the absence from October. Grant Josh's leave of absence from October eighteenth. Tentatively until November ninth.
Uh, any discussion on that?
Well, I think we can find a way to share with Josh.
We have the election.
No, we've already got that, Tom. Her mother and I are gonna go to Holyoke with anti-Josh signs.
Yes, yeah.
I thought I saw your mom with my opponent's sign on primary day.
Yeah, just to um, we, you add that.
I always figured to leave with absence.
It just holds the role and.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, what I'll do though is I'll use up my uh, whenever I have left for vacation hours.
Okay.
And then what the.
Okay.
That conflicts with whatever you're voting, but.
Okay, so um. I don't know if we have to change our wording, um. Do you know how many hours you have left?
How long?
So you wouldn't actually start a leave until the twenty fifth?
That's what I gotta look at is what I have for hours, um. So.
You want us to change ours to the twenty fifth, so that you're taking a paid week? But if you're paid, are you still able to do what you need to do that week?
Say after.
Yeah.
Would you like me to rescind that motion and bring it up again in two weeks?
So I don't, I don't, in two weeks, it will already be.
Alright.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I don't, Wendy, do you see any conflict here or I think we should be okay, right?
Yeah, uh, can you vote to and and allow any paid leave um available? So that would allow you to do either, right? Would would that work?
Okay. Um, so I would um make an amendment to the motion to add um. To allow any uh unpaid, to allow for uh use of any remaining paid leave. Prior to beginning.
We have to vote on that, that's his choice, true story.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I haven't seen the reason for it, but yeah. Well, just so that it's clear that it's not a full unpaid leave of absence, it would be, he's gonna use his time and then go on.
Right, so beginning of the eighteenth, I'm gonna use up whatever time I have left. Okay, and once that's exhausted. Um, the the uh.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor of the original motion as amended?
Alright.
Alright.
Beautiful. Alright.
Can I go home now?